...because you don't want to hear me, you want to hear them. But you're going to hear me anyhow, because I have a very loud voice. Welcome and thank you for coming. It's a great crowd. But it's Peekskill, so I didn't expect anything less. I just wanted to first start off with a bunch of housekeeping bullet points. And one of those, or the first one is, I just like to have full transparency whenever I moderated debate, which I've been doing for about a decade. And just let you know that I don't live in Peekskill, and therefore I don't vote in Peekskill, which is one of the reasons I'm the moderator, was that's the way it should be done. I have no horse in the race. I will also tell you that I am being paid an honorarium, which of course is equal amounts from either side, which I appreciate. Some of you remember, I hope fondly, North County News. I used to be the publisher of that. And also Rick Bezullo, who was the editor of North County News, is here with us with the Examiner to cover it, and we appreciate that. I live in Yorktown, and I have to tell you, I love coming to Peekskill. The debates that I've moderated over the years have been all over the place. Yorktown, Cortland, Croton, Putnam, and guess which city I'd like to go, town or city I'd like to do best. Because Peekskill people are very passionate, they really are, which makes doing the debates stimulating and fun and interesting. And again, you know, maybe it's too much information, but even in Yorktown, I'm registered to vote, but I'm not affiliated with any party. I'm unaffiliated. I'm a member of the Gateway Board of Chamber, which I'm very proud of, the board of the Chamber of Commerce. And as you see my shy sign, I have a PR business. Oh, talk about a shameless plug. And I also act, and I'm in a play in a couple of weeks.
Where?
If you want to know. Well, no, that's not important. I want to introduce, the timekeeper is Anthony Fusco. He's sitting right here. He also lives in Yorktown, so he also does not vote in Peekskill and has no stake in the November 7th election. He is a past legislator in Putnam County. So what's going to happen with the timekeeper is, thanks to technology, we are going to use his phone. And I'll explain in a few minutes how much time each candidate has to answer questions, et cetera. And at, what is it, Tony, at the 20-second mark? When the candidates have 20 seconds left to speak, he will just sort of help them gather their final thoughts by holding up that yellow sign that says 20 seconds left. Both sides have agreed that no candidates during the Q and A will use a cellphone. And of course, we ask, as has become common practice in any public forum, to please silence your cellphones, so that they don't interrupt the flow of the forum. The questions, with a couple of exceptions, were submitted by the people of Peekskill. I'm sure a lot of you are here tonight who submitted questions, and we really appreciate that through social media. And very good questions, as you'll see tonight. And, I mean, I would assume that they were submitted by more than a dozen people, but I would assume that they reflect the interests and the sentiments of just about everybody here as well. And when you hear them, you can decide for yourself if you agree with that statement. When I ask questions, I do not indicate who submitted it, except maybe in one case, as you'll see, I might do that because the person said it's okay. Also, when I ask questions, tonight, there are no titles. If somebody holds a current office, I do not refer to them by title. I refer to everybody as Mr. or Ms. Smith. Well, actually, there is Mr. Smith, okay. Not a good example. But the point is, no titles tonight. Everybody starts fresh. And the questions may have been rephrased for the purpose of keeping them as even-handed as possible. I don't ask gotcha questions, as far as I know. And I think that's about it. I want to thank Allison Curtis and Brendan Fitzgerald, who represented either side in making this possible, really only because of them that we can be here and do this. Fran Brunel in the City Wall, who was very helpful with facilities management, and obviously all the candidates and all of you. And please, as much as you can restrain yourself holding applause until the end of each of the segments. First, we're obviously doing the Common Council and then the mayoral candidates. And now, I'll just quickly tell you how this is going to work. For the Common Council, it's basically, if you were here in 2015 or watched it, it's pretty much the same format, which works pretty well. So each of the six candidates up here will have two minutes for an opening statement. And then when I ask a series of questions, they each will have one minute to answer all the same questions. They each get the same question to answer. However, for the minute, you can say anything you want. You don't have to answer the question. You can reply to another candidate who spoke before you. That's really up to you. The only thing that Tony and I keep track of is that it's, you know, within the time limit. But you can say whatever you like. And there's two-minute opening statement, a one-minute closing statement, and a one-minute answer to each question. And just so everybody understands, and you don't think there was a mistake, it may sound confusing, but we draw lots, and so we already know who's going first, one through six, for the opening statement. Then the first question, the number-two person goes, then the third question, the number-three person. But for the closing statement, we keep the same order, because if you think about it, the first person that goes with the opening statement shouldn't also get the last word. So by keeping the same order, the sixth person who makes the opening statement gets the last word in the closing statement. Anyway, it sounds like a Monty Python skit, but it's not. And I think, I think you about had it with me, because I think I'm finished. So, if you're ready, Tony, I'm going to have to keep referring, Tony has to reset every time we start timing the candidates, so you'll just notice that I'll have to keep referring to him to make sure that we're ready to go. So, first up, I should state, for the opening statement is Luis Segarra. And if you want, I mean, if you want to stand up here, you can. It's up to you. I don't, I'll make myself scarce while I speak.
Is it on?
Yes, just, just.
All right, and you are?
Testing, is it on? Testing, yep, now it is. Right, again, Luis, two minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you both for moderating the event. My name is Luis Segarra, and I am running for City Council. I am the youngest of twelve children. We did have a lot of fun at home. I was born and raised in the Bronx by two very strong and independent women, my grandmother and my mother. She promised two things before I was born. One, that I'd be a Democrat. I am a proud Democrat, with an open mind and respect for other people's views and opinions. Two, that I'd be a person of faith. God helped me if I wasn't, because she really was. And three, that I'd be a person of integrity and high-ball character. And I think she'd be very proud of me because of that. My wife and I came up to Peekskill twenty-three years ago. We raised our two children, and they are now independent Peekskill residents, along with my granddaughter. I have to be Spider-Man for her this Halloween. I'm looking forward to that. Right now, the chief operating officer and chief financial officer of my company, the Crescent Companies. We started here sixteen years ago. We have offices in Harlem and in Wall Street. I oversee revenues of over $12 million this year and close to 100 employees. So I do know how to manage people and manage a budget. I'm a proud member of the African-American Chamber of Commerce, the National Hispanic Business Group, of which I am a past chairman, and a member of the Peekskill Women's Club. We do great work for the charities in Peekskill, for the youth, the veterans, and we donated 100 cherry blossom trees to the City of Peekskill in the purification of the waterfront. I work in diversity. I work with the major developers in corporate America, the Goldman Sachs, the related companies that service the properties in diversity and ensuring that they give opportunities to minority, women, and local businesses, and employ our local residents throughout the city. Thank you.
Okay, Ramon is number two.
Good evening, everyone. Everyone. Let me try to speak a little low. I don't think the microphone is very well. And I don't want to give you the fall if you have some kind of accent. I don't want to give the fall to the microphone. My name is Ramon Fernandez. I was born in New York City, and I grew up in Dominican Republic. I am a small business owner here in Peekskill. I can define myself like a community person. And everything that I do, that I did, I did here in Peekskill, no outside, because I take care about my neighbors, my family, my kids, my school, then friends, everything. I am a member for the Association Church. I visit the sick people as a volunteer and bring the community, the communion, and the house nursing homes. And I visit the jail, the county jail, in a spiritual jail. I am co-founder for the Peekskill Juice Soccer Club, that we started five years ago. And I say "we" because I like to work in team, and I believe in the people that are here in Peekskill. We started that club for the youth people in Peekskill, only one team, eighteen people, and now we are more, there are 100 kids. And that includes parents, and that includes the visitors that came here to Peekskill. I am co-founder for the Peekskill Hispanic Community Corps. Both of them is a non-profit organization, and we work to build bridge inside the community. That's the goal. That's what I do all my life, and I am working in the private sector my entire life. Thank you.
I also wanted to mention, I'd neglected to say this, that tonight's forum is being recorded on video by several people, so there should be no shortage of your, or people who aren't here especially, their ability to watch this however they want to online, et cetera. Okay, next, Joe Torres.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to say thank you for coming. Thank you, Bruce, for doing this today. And first, I want to start off, I was born up here as a young kid, around 10 years old. My parents moved up here, and I grew up in this city, and I got to love the city. I love the people in the city because of diversity. And that's what makes this city great right now, to this day. And a few years back, Frank Catalina asked me to run with him because he felt we could make a big difference in the city. And I thought it was a good idea, because he always heard stories of Peekskill saying it's going to be the next big city, that's going to, not a big city, but a good city, where it's going to be built up and people want to come here. And I used to get it from older people when I was a kid. And it never happened. So when Frank asked me to come and run with him, because we could do good things, I said, hey, why not? It's something that we can make a great change. And I believe, the last three years we've been here, almost four years, that we've made some great changes. To see the city, you know, turn around and going in the direction it is, I think it's great for Peekskill. I love Peekskill, and it's good to see, to want to see families come here, live here. People want to move here, because we are a great city. And I believe we have the most potential on any city, along any city or town along the Hudson River. And hopefully, I can continue that. I was honored to be elected and try to make the changes we've done. And I believe we have a really good team that works with us, and I think we can make great changes as time goes on. And I believe we will make great changes, and hopefully, we can make Peekskill really one of the better cities on the Hudson. And I just want to thank everybody for your time. Thank you.
Colin Smith.
Good evening, everyone. You can hear me? Okay. I just want to thank Bruce Aparr for moderating this evening, and also thank my colleagues and other candidates for coming out tonight, and for you all coming here this evening. I wrote out an opening, but since no one else is reading theirs, I feel like I can't read mine either. So I'll just say, I'm born and raised here in the city of Peekskill. I went to Peekskill City School District. I'm a graduate of the class of 1991. I've lived here almost my entire life, with the exception of a couple of years when I was out of state for school, as well as some time I lived in White Plains during law school. But otherwise, I've been here for my entire life, and I really love this city. I love the people in this city, for all the reasons that have been mentioned already tonight, for its diversity, for the progress that we've made, that we'll continue to make, and just for the promise of the future that a city like Peekskill really offers. I'm just going to share a brief story, because I think it really capitalizes why Peekskill is, in my opinion, one of the best of many best choices for, you know, to live in the Hudson Valley. In the early 1970s, my parents met, and met had me, and then got married. My mother grew up in Verplank, and my father grew up in Croton, as an interracial couple here in this area. In 1973, their options were limited in terms of where they felt comfortable moving into, and that's what led them to Peekskill. As a result, I've grown up here in this city. I have lifelong friends here. I love this community. I believe in this community. And whoever or however the election shakes out on November 7th, myself along with whoever I'm elected with, we're going to move this city forward one way or the other. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Thank you, Bruce, for moderating. My name's Robert Sullivan. I was born in South Buffalo, New York, where everybody who's over 18 and not dead is a Democrat. I attended schools up in Buffalo, New York, attended college there. After graduation from college, I did two things immediately after graduation. I married my wife of 43 years, who's over here, and I accepted a commission in the United States Navy. So together, my wife and I went to Norfolk, Virginia, where I was posted, and I was assigned to a ship in the Atlantic Fleet, and had deployed to the Middle East and to the Mediterranean. After law school, or after the Navy, we came back to the New York area, new to us. My wife began her career with Nabisco Brands, and I started law school at St. John's University. Some of you probably are aware that I'm a lawyer. After law school, we moved up here. My first job was as an assistant district attorney in Brooklyn, where I prosecuted major felonies. I was in the Sex Crimes Bureau prosecuting domestic violence, crimes against children, crimes against the elderly, actually, they mixed in the Sex Crimes Bureau. Went into private practice after that. Currently, I have a small law firm in Midtown Manhattan, four lawyers. We moved up to Peekskill, my wife and I, 30 years ago. We were going to flip our condo up in the woods, and we were going to get out of here. We loved it. We stayed. We're still in the woods. So I got involved in the Homeowners Association of the Woods, where I've been the president for six years, been on the board 16 years, managed its budgets, about $1.1 million a year budget, taking care of 344 homes, about $70 million worth of real estate. I got involved in politics one way. After advocating on an issue for my condominium, I was approached on the sidewalk by Mayor Catalina and said, have you ever thought about getting into politics? I'd only met Mayor Catalina perhaps once before, once or twice at some events. And I said, Mayor, I got a problem. I'm a Democrat. What else is your problem? No problem. So I was able to join the ticket, and I'm able to maintain my party affiliation, maintain my beliefs, and I'm looking forward to working with this team. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
I'm going to follow my colleague, Ramon Fernandez, and not use a microphone. So thank you all for being here. Thank you for taking part in this very important part of democracy, hearing what your candidates have to say about the issues and what their vision is for Peekskill. And thank you again for everyone that organized this event as well, for giving us a platform to be here and talk about the issues. Now, I'm here in front of you because I'm running to serve you as your next City Councilwoman. And I love this city. I love Peekskill. First-generation Colombian-American, and one of my parents, who are immigrants from Colombia, met in New York City. And when they decided to get married and have a family, they decided to set their roots here in Peekskill. This is where my parents raised myself and my younger brother. This is the city I grew up in. This is the city I know. Eventually, I ended up going to Penn State University, and I graduated with majors in international politics and classical and ancient Mediterranean studies. I was lucky enough to be able to travel with my studies. I was in Egypt and Israel to finishing my archaeological field school, and after graduation, I did some community service work in Uganda. And after traveling abroad, and to be honest, I thought I would be abroad, working at a nonprofit somewhere, and I realized, being in these other communities overseas with such different histories, such different cultures, that the people closest to, the people closest to the solutions in their communities are the people, are those closest to the problem. And I realized that I would be better fit coming back to the community that I knew best, that raised me. I would be better fit here to make a difference. So that's why I came back. Since coming back, I've had a mission of service here at Peekskill. I started working with the JAM Peak Homeless Shelter. I am now currently a member of the Conservation Advisory Council, who was able to bring in over $600,000 in solar investment here for the state of Peekskill. I'm currently working for State Senator Marisol Campana as her scheduling director and her district representative, overseeing a lot of different constituents who are, have a diverse community, just as we do here at Peekskill. So I'm here because I want to serve you all, and I want to give you the kind of representation that I believe you all deserve, through collaboration, transparency, and through one Peekskill. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. For the questions, as I stated, each candidate, each council candidate, it's different from the mayoral candidates, each council candidate has 60 seconds to answer each question, because there are six of them, and we have to, you know, just try and put some limit on it. But can you play, Tony, the sound against everybody is familiar, and they don't think, could be somebody else's cellphone going up? I just want them to recognize the...
Actually, I don't know where to get it, but it's...
Okay.
I'll open my mouth, most of all.
Well, I think it's the only sound here, right?
Right.
Yeah, so, and then you've all been great so far, so thank you.
I did have me answered, so there might be some other sound.
Okay, all right. Well, cross that bridge when we get to it. All right, so now I'm going to ask a series of questions. Each candidate will answer the same question. And as I said, just about in every case, except where I'll note, if it's not, that these came from citizens of Peekskill. And some of them are totally unsurprising, others may be surprising. So continuing with the order, the first person will be Ramon, right? Yes?
Louis.
Louis.
Number two.
No, because Louis was ready first. He was first to the opening statement, that's why. Yeah, I see, I have it down here, so you know. Yeah, so it'll be Ramon, then Joe, then Colin, and like that. Anyway, so what I did, I don't see any reason that forums like this shouldn't, you know, have some levity, you might say, with paying due full due respect to all the topics and all the people. So I tried to just add a little bit of, you know, you'll see what I mean. So each question, I actually gave a headline from my journalism background. So the first question, I call, for you Shakespeare fans, a spot, a spot, my kingdom for a spot. And the question is, does Peekskill have a parking problem, and what can be done about it, and how should the solution be funded? So again, Ramon, starting with you, you have 60 seconds.
I think this is a big issue, big problem, that we have in Peekskill. When I saw the statement for the city in April, I heard that they're going to build parking downtown, I mean, down by the riverfront. We have a big problem here downtown, and we need to resolve that. And it's no, I'd like to study, but sometimes you need to have some common sense. We have a parking building over here in James Street, five floors, and it's only one floor user for mirrors. The other one is for permanent parking. If you go now, you're going to see three-level entities. If you go in the daytime, you're going to see the same three-level entities. So when the people come, they don't know where they're going to park in. And that's another problem. We don't have any sign to show where is the municipal parking. Go to any other city, and then you can see for three, five, six floors, and they give a direction, and you can find where is the municipal parking. It's only that you need to be encouraged and try to resolve the problem. Is that it? Easy. Thank you.
Thank you. And yet, we need really, of course, the applause, if you start adding it up after every question or answer, it's going to add time. So as much as you can cooperate, I thank you. Again, if any of the candidates want me to repeat a question as we go along, just let me know. Joe, you're next.
All right, yes, I do believe we have a parking problem. In a way, it's a good thing, because that means people are coming to the city to visit here, and that's good for the restaurants, for the stores, and everything else. But I do believe we have to build another parking garage, and we will have to get some kind of parking authority, and maybe bond something to put a garage up, maybe down towards the river where Ginsburg was supposed to many years ago. We do need more parking, but it's not really, the city's only so big, and you can only do so much to make parking here. Whether they either build a garage somewhere else or down at the riverfront, so we're limited, no matter what happens. But that's probably the best you can do.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not following my own, what I said at the beginning, which I will now switch to by using Mr. and Ms., so sorry about that. That's my own little thing. Okay, so Torres just spoke. Mr. Smith.
So I think that, I think parking is an issue here in the city of Peekskill. I think that, as has been stated, it is, it's not a bad thing, because it seems that the parking increases, at least to some degree, as a result of the development in the downtown area. My understanding is that there is some sort of study currently going on to try and evaluate what are some of the ways to increase our parking efficiency. That sounds like it makes sense to me. So I think that at this point, we are, you know, we have to see what, you know, the study comes back with, and at that point, maybe determination, what are the best, what's the best, most efficient way to deal with the, you know, with the issues in the downtown area. And that's not even to get to parking in residential areas, which is a whole other matter, but I've just got my 20 seconds, so I'll end on that note for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, I think as all of my colleagues have said, parking downtown being a problem is a great thing, because that means people are going down there, they're eating, they're shopping, and so forth. Unfortunately, being an urban environment, we have limited space to be able to build additional parking. But perhaps the Bank Street lot could be converted or used for a parking garage, an additional parking garage. That would have to be funded, unfortunately, through bonding, but it has to be done, because if we don't solve the parking problem downtown, downtown's going to strengthen. Similarly, parking down on the, at the riverfront for the train station is another thing to be looked at, but that's not the most immediate problem right now, it's our downtown. So I think looking at a location in the downtown area, proper funding through bonding, another parking garage, and that would help solve the problem.
Thank you. Ms. Acadella.
Yes, no, I agree with my colleagues. I do agree that we do have a parking problem, but as my colleagues have said, both on on her side, that it's a great thing. Any downtown, any busload downtown, you want to have a parking problem. That means people are down there, that means they're putting money into your local economy, which is great for the city. I do think that, and I know that there's an assessment going on, and I think it's very important that we understand the analysis on the, where is, what time during the week and what time during the day is there's this high parking volume? Can these parking spots be displaced and put elsewhere? Where is the available space? These are all things that we will need to know. And there's also other great solutions to these problems. Bike lanes, for example. By providing bike lanes, it adds more of incentive for folks to travel downtown on their bike. I think that, although myself, I'm not a huge biker, but I have biked on the streets, and I don't know if any of you guys have gone out there, but it's really intimidating having cars behind you and not really feeling like you have a place on the road. So I think bike lanes really alleviate the problem that we're having with parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Segarra.
Thank you. I think a lot of it has already been said, and they're saying having a parking problem is a good thing. Not if you're looking for parking, it's not.
Right.
And I think we need to look at public-private partnerships, because a city can't take it on its own. With public-private partnerships, you have to let them just come in and build it. They'll benefit from it, but so will the city. They'll benefit from it, but so will the city. You have to look at different avenues that, that people find parking, enjoy all the great things the city is offering, and do things a little different. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go to the second question with Mr. Torres going first. This one is called "Making a Bid for Business." What are your ideas on strengthening local business in town and how important on your list of goals for the city is it? Mr. Torres.
Well, it's one of our top things, because we want businesses to come here to attract people. And I believe, even now, we've worked hard to draw that, where you have businesses coming in, and I believe it helps the economy in the city, you have people that have jobs. So it's one of our top priorities, I believe, is to make sure that we help businesses come in and try to work with them, instead of chasing them away, and try to say, let's, what can we do to help you get here, or bring you here? So I think it's very important.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
I agree, I think that, you know, bringing businesses to the city is very important. It's a top priority. For me, it's been nice to see the development over the last decade at least, in the downtown area, with new businesses coming in. And, you know, it stimulates the economy, it gets more people coming, it's what's made Peak Skill a destination city. And as far as, you know, my ideas for building that business, I think, one, one way that's obviously proven effective, and perhaps, you know, we just need to, you know, make sure that we're using these pilot programs in the most judicious manner, but, you know, providing incentives for business owners to come to Peak Skill. Parking plays into that, of course, because it impacts businesses, it impacts, you know, accessibility, both by customers as well as the business owners, so.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, I just want to refer back to a response that was given earlier about the parking problem, I believe it was by Ms. Agudelo. One of the solutions would be bicycling. I don't know, I'm looking around the room here, and I don't know that a lot of people are gonna be bicycling downtown to go to restaurants and eat. So that's a good solution, it's a good recreational solution, but it's not a practical solution. But on the bid, with respect to building businesses, we build businesses by bringing people into the city. People spend money, and that's what businesses need. So attracting businesses into residential development, attracting young families primarily to come into town and reconstruct or rehabilitate some of these beautiful homes we have in town, that's, I think, where we have to go. When you bring people, they bring them, they bring business, and our businesses can thrive back.
Thank you. Ms. Agudelo.
So I do, I absolutely believe that we need to be supporting more local development here at Peak Skill. Definitely strengthening small businesses. I think that, I, we're not at all, our team is, and then there was talk about chasing businesses away. It's actually the opposite. I think that we, as a council, serving you all, need to have a vision as to what it is that we want to see in Peak Skill, with your all, with your collaboration. Know what needs are not being met here at Peak Skill. What are you all seeking outside of Peak Skill that you can't already get here? And then bring those businesses that can meet those needs here, so you can invest in your local economy, which is gonna help the city regardless. We need to be seeking out these kind of developers, and then, and at the same time, we also need to be making sure that we're looking out for our small businesses, that by bringing in, if it is a bigger business, that we're not running any of our small businesses uptown. We want to make sure that we are, we have a very safe and healthy balance. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Sagara.
Thank you. Well, we have to make it affordable for them to be here. Any business is gonna stay if they can make money. If they're being taxed heavily, if they're continuously being asked to pay a fee here, a fee there, eventually gonna leave. We have to continue to bring business to them. The events that we have here, the Cinco de Mayo, the Jazz Festival, those are events that bring people to Peak Skill, bring business to the businesses here. We have to continue to promote those type of programs. We also have to work together with them to understand what businesses work well with them. Do we put a gym next to a restaurant? Probably not, that's not gonna work. We gotta find like businesses that work well together, that someone can come into one store, go to the next, stay for a little while, then go to the next store. So we need to definitely create a community of stores that work well as one, the way our team, PSC has been doing all along. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Fernandez.
I agree with Mr. Sagara, like he just mentioned about the Cinco de Mayo. It's like one business owner, a typical, it's not a community, it's not a city, a typical. So we need to focus and create the brands, the name for the Peak Skill. Like all the cities, they do it. Like sometimes some countries, they do it, and they sell to the community, and invite to the investor to be here in Peak Skill. We have a huge, huge diversity community. We're gonna take advantage of that. And mostly now, that we have an entire country, problem for the diversity. So what we can offer to the entire country, that we are a friendly city. We were a friendly town before, many years ago. So now we're gonna change the name and say, we are a friendly city. You are welcome, you can come here, and we're gonna open the city hall and bring the information to everybody. Easy way, that's the business of the investor they wanted to do when they wanna go to somewhere, have information.
Thank you. This next question is one of the questions that I indicated, I wanted to identify the person who submitted it, who many of you will recognize, Brian Fromagalli, who was the editor of the Peak Skill Post online. It's a very, very serious question. I call it "The Case for Color Blindness." So please, pay close attention as I read it. "At common council meetings and in other public forums, the Peak Skill NAACP contends that the city of Peak Skill does not hire enough minorities and is quote 'structurally racist,' unquote. Do you believe that to be true? And if so, what can be done about it?" Again, that was submitted by Brian Fromagalli in the Peak Skill Post. And the first person to respond is Mr. Smith.
I see you gave me the easy questions. I have to say that I think that, first of all, I'm not sure what I think about the answer to that question as far as whether or not, I believe you said the city hall is structurally racist. I am aware that there's...
Well, just to be clear, and we'll add to your time, the city of Peak Skill, it said.
The city of Peak Skill.
That's how we phrase the words.
I think, when I spoke earlier, I talked about the diversity here in the city is one of the, one of its big selling points, in my opinion, and I think many people agree with that. It was what drew my parents here in the early 1970s. That said, does that mean that the city is in 2017 without its problems with regards to race and diversity? No, no city is. With regards to how those issues need to be addressed, I think that, you know, we have to take a look at that specifically, you know, with regards to whether it's the hiring practices of the city. You know, there's been a lot of conversation about, you know, there being this kind of Peak Skill first, or showing preference for, you know, where possible, when it comes to hiring for Peak Skill residents, that's part of that equation, and my time's up.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan.
Just to clarify, we're talking about the city of Peak Skill, the government, the municipal government?
That's the way the question is phrased, yes.
Okay. I don't know the exact figures of hiring and percentages of minorities that are hired by the city of Peak Skill. What I do say that, as a member of the common council of the city of Peak Skill, the city of Peak Skill is gonna abide by all laws regarding hiring of whoever may come for hiring, civil service laws, discrimination laws, and if any of that is disobeyed, that's a major problem for me. I'll be the first on it. I'm not sure, so sure that that premise is accurate. What I do think that the city can do better, though, is recruiting for positions. A lot of times, the only notice you'll have of jobs that are available in the city, I think Mr. Rainey sends them out on his Facebook page. We have to have a workforce in the city that reflects the makeup of our city. And one of the ways to do that is to recruit people to come and look for jobs in the city. Then we can determine whether they're qualified, not qualified for the job. And the other thing we have to do as a city government is make sure that, once people are hired by our government, our city, that they have the opportunity to advance in terms of training and professional enhancement, so.
Thank you. Ms. Agudelo.
Thank you. I absolutely agree with Mr. Sullivan, and I was just about to say the same thing. I think that we can take a more proactive approach to this. I think that recruitment is essential, and I think we can even take it up a notch. I, as a member of the Conservation Advisory Council, I've grown to be very close to kind of the process within bureaucracy. I mean, aside from the fact that I've worked at a planning department before, I've worked very closely with the planning department here in the city of Peak Skill for the CAC. And I think that if we had junior positions, junior seats for all these different agencies, whether it be historic preservation, or the planning board, or the Conservation Advisory Council, if we encouraged our high school seniors to take these seats on, so they felt like they were invested, and actually, they felt as though their decision-making could actually make a difference in their community, I think that would be a great incentive for them to want to turn around and apply here. And of course, we need to offer them jobs and trainings that are gonna allow them to make a livable wage and a career for the rest of their lives. So I definitely think that recruitment is the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sagara.
I agree, a lot has been said. I think we do have a diverse city, and our city should be represented by a community that lives there. We have a lot of African-Americans, Hispanic, a lot of women, and Caucasians, and it should be represented by its people. We have to know what jobs are available, know to have it provided for them. We have to have programs that's gonna train them. And we know right now there's jobs that in five years are gonna be empty, through attrition, people retiring, or other reasons. We should be training them now. We have a lot of people unemployed, people trying to put foot on the table for their families, and we're not bringing them in to train them. We have high school students who are coming out, that we've got great jobs that could be available for them, but we're letting them go by. We've gotta take the initiative, we gotta let them know information is a powerful tool, and we have to put it out there for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez.
Well, almost my answer, they did already, but I think if we create some resolution, that we give the opportunity, first, to Peak Skill residents to apply for different kinds of jobs. I think that's automatic, we're gonna have the diversity. We gotta have the diversity in the residents, so we don't have to go too far of that. It was that, that question, that was in the first debate that we participated, so everybody can see that. So, and it was right here, and we were there, and it was in the end of ACP four. We did a proposal for the Peak Skill Hispanic community, to the Chita Comoces, the Major, and the Democrats and Republicans, to bring volunteers, seniors volunteers, to do an interpreter, because many people, they need some kind of translation to their service in the city. And that's cost any single penny to the city, and nothing happened. So when I be there, and the resident of Peak Skill, they chose me, we're gonna focus and bring this kind of opportunity to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Torres.
Yes, being on the council, our goal is really hire anybody from Peak Skill, it doesn't matter who you are. And, you know, if anybody saw any kind of racism, any council members would speak up immediately, and I think we all would say that way. And when we go behind closed doors, we talk about who can we bring from Peak Skill to the city, and it doesn't matter who you are. Yeah, the city has its problems here and there, and it's probably one of the best cities that I've been to, that everybody gets along. And I don't see that much racism compared to other cities, compared to the city, and I think that's what makes the city great. I don't believe there's racism in City Hall. Thank you.
Okay, the next question is titled "All in the Families," and the question is, "There are single-family homes in Peak Skill with multiple families living under one roof. How can this situation be addressed?" Mr. Sullivan, you're first.
Very simple. I think we have to enhance our code enforcement mechanisms in the city. You know, just merely because single-family homes are occupied as multiple families, there are also safety, fire code issues. We just have to make sure that all these residents are safe. I think another thing the city can be more proactive on, and this all goes to quality of life issues as well, code enforcement, making sure that these homes are safe, getting rid of zombies. There's mechanisms available to the city, the state passed statutes last year in December that can go after banks, or actually, we can assess large fines against banks and mortgage companies. These are things that the city can do. We have to be very aggressive in our code enforcement. And I know this, as a president of the Homeland Association up in Woods, we've had zombie units that we've had to deal with. And those are zombie units in multiple dwellings that have to be addressed by the city. We don't have the capability to do it as private citizens. So that's something I think the city can do very easily, and simply get more people in the building to come in to enforce this.
Thank you. Ms. Agudelo.
Thank you. Well, this question, it's a very heavily packed question, and it actually points out a lot of different issues that we have here at Peak Skill. We do have a number of houses with a number of different people living in them, crowded in rooms. But we, the thing that us as a team, what we want to bring to the city council, is we want to, we want to think sustainably, and we want to think long-term, we have a vision, and we want to follow through with our plan. So if we, and I do agree, I think that we do need to start enforcing, we need a code enforcer. I know that we have a building inspector, but we need a code enforcer, because there are huge safety issues. We saw the fire at Fremont Ave a few, a few months back, I mean, that would have been disastrous. So it is definitely a safety concern for a lot of community members. But what are we gonna do with all these people that we end up kicking out? Where are they gonna go? Some of these people have been here for generations, these people have kids, they have brothers, they could be, they could be your family members now. We need to start thinking about the issue of affordable housing. Why is it that our current residents can't even afford to be here? Why is it that people my age are looking for rooms to rent, because they can't afford the same as they grew up in?
Thank you. And Ms. Sagara.
Thank you. Code enforcement is the most major thing. Not only because there's a fire safety issue, there are health issues as well. You have five people, six people in one apartment, one gets sick, they're all sick. You never know what it is they have, it can spread, and then the whole building is sick. So we have issues that we've really gotta take, take hold of. Our landlords, you know, they're the ones that have to be held accountable. They're the ones letting people, six, seven people come in, and they know they're in there. So that makes it like they don't see it until they're caught, it's not, it's not a solution to the problem. We definitely need more housing, we need quality housing, not just any housing, because I've seen some of the housing that's out there in Peak Skill, the public housing, that is not quality housing for anyone. And once on the council, and we're caught hand and handle, public housing authority, make sure we have quality housing for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, my colleagues, they mentioned code enforcement. I'd like to say equitable code enforcement, because we need to keep a balance. Vanessa, my colleague, say, we need affordable house here. And she mentioned the fire in Fremont. After that fire, we have around 20 families looking for rooms, looking for rent, here in Peak Skill. After the budget, the, for college here, were united together, the Republican, and increased the tax, many of the renters here in Peak Skill, they had to pay more for rent, more than $3 per month. So if we're looking for affordable house, if we're looking for code enforcement, we need to put a balance in the table, and be clear, and bring the transparency. We don't wanna work with privilege. We wanna be the same, the same, the same team, and the same regulation for everybody in Peak. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Torres.
Yes, one of our biggest problems is code enforcement. We've been trying for years to hire code enforcement officers, and I've been to houses to the city, and some of them, I mean, you'd be ashamed to walk into the way they treat the people that live there, their slum lords, they don't care about the city, and most of them live out of town, so they don't really care what happens in the city, and I think we have to really come down and, you know, start finding these people and make sure that they do the right thing for the people that live there. That's the most important thing, so. Code enforcement is a big thing, like everybody else.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
I think everything has been said regarding code enforcement that I'm not gonna repeat, but I will just add on that, from the perspective... but I will just add on that from the perspective of the school district, that when you have single-family properties that are essentially turned into multi-family homes illegally, it increases the burden on the school district because now you have more students, but no increase in the amount of taxable property. So there's, you know, there's ancillary issues as well that come up as a result. And so, you know, I think that code enforcement is an ongoing issue in a city like Peekskill. We have to just, you know, continue to look for more and better ways of doing it.
Thank you. This next question, which is, actually, it's close to my heart for reasons I will not go into, but I don't know that it gets asked a lot, and that's why I thought it was important to include. It will be started by Ms. Agudelo, and here's the question, which I call "Enabling the Disabled." Peekskill has a share of aging infrastructure that is not user-friendly to persons with disabilities. Are there city agencies authorized to review and correct these obstacles? If not, would you consider creating an entity such as an advisory committee to support the quality of life of persons with disabilities? I'll repeat it for anybody who wants.
Thank you. Well, I think that, I don't believe that there's a particular agency that with this specific goal in mind, although it does seem as though maybe Human Relations Commission might take this up. Although I do agree that we should have an agency, actually, that makes sure that we're up to date as far as ADP goes, make sure, I mean, I canvass things, knock on doors, getting to know the voters. I realize that there's some streets over by what was called Fake Town, by Mount Olivet, where there is no curb cuts. There is, you see the handicap parking spots, but no curb cuts. So if people are in chairs, how are these people supposed to get on the sidewalks? I mean, there's just, the little things are really what make huge issues. You and I, who are abled and who can walk and don't have these difficulties, who don't walk down these sidewalks, which are extremely rough to walk down, if you have a cane or if you have a roller, I mean, these are, these little things, such as having a sidewalk improvement district, where we split up the city into the districts, and there's a fund collective to improve your sidewalks in your area. These are things that would make a huge difference for our handicapped community members.
Thank you. Mrs. Segaro.
I agree, there should be a committee that studies where the issues are and how best to fix them. Because everything that we do costs money. And it affects the city's budget, and it's going to affect how much we can do. So it's great that we want to do all these great things, but we have to be mindful of the budget. Every year, we can do some work, we can have some of the businesses hop out, but we can't tax them. Because then we go back to the point of how different businesses are in. Well, it's not by taxing them. There are ways to do it. We have to have our committee put together to go over the best issues at the best rate as possible that doesn't also affect or hurt the city. We need to have these sidewalks where our ADA individuals, our seniors, especially our seniors, can walk freely and safely. So definitely a commission is the best way to get us started.
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez.
Well, when my colleague, he mentioned about it, I don't know, he's talking about to bring service. I say that, this is my third forum, we, this is the third forum we participate in this race. And we have that question before. In my experience, as a small business owner, I didn't say that I am car owner, parade on, in Rio Taxi, I know almost entire in town, and I can see all the problems that we have. I remember one of them meeting in the Chamber of Commerce, when they were rebuilding the health center, we mentioned it, there are no spat to drop off the disabled, the mother, when they're coming with the baby. So I can say there are no good service in the buses, in the buses stop for the people they can go into the buses. So we need to focus on that, and we need to do it like officially, to have a vision.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Torres.
Yes, I believe we should have some kind of advisory board. I think anything we do for seniors and handicapped people are very important. But Louis is right, certain things cost a lot of money. But I believe we can try to find some kind of grants. There's always grants out there that will help you get things done. And that's one way of getting things done without spending money for the city. And that will help the seniors, and that's what we should always look into, you know, whatever we have people.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
So I agree that, you know, there's a lot that could be done around the city to improve it, to make it more user-friendly for persons with disabilities. I have an office right over on Park Street. The building, that my office is, is second floor walk-up. I'm not quite sure how old it is, but I can tell you that it's not easy for able persons to get up to my office. And it's not an uncommon setup in a lot of places, because they're older and they just weren't designed with that in mind. So I think that whether it's by committee, advisory board, whatever model or whatever vehicle we find to address this issue, we need to, one, probably look for public-private partnerships to address it, with the understanding that, we talked about businesses, you know, attracting businesses. We want to bring more businesses into Peekskill. We need to have places that are going to be, you know, ADA-compliant and user-friendly for persons with disability, because that could be a major break decision-maker for persons considering that.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan.
Again, I think we are into creating agencies to address problems. I think with respect to compliance with the ADA and with respect to the handicap, we have a building department. Those are code issues. Those are things that have to be enforced. If we're not compliant, then we have to make them compliant. I'm very sensitive to the needs of the elderly. I just got my Medicare card this year, so, or this month, rather. So I get it. But again, we just can't go about and start making curb cuts and all kinds of things all over the city. We have to focus on what the problems are. And a lot of it, I think, lays on code enforcement. And if the city is responsible for these non-compliant areas, then the city has to pick it up, put it in their budget, and make the appropriate repairs. Otherwise, it's going to fall on the individual building owners. And so we have to make sure that we're being, I think, equitable code compliance, making sure that people comply with the code and only the code. Those codes are made to deal with these issues. And if they're enforced and they're properly applied, then those problems should be addressed.
Thank you. The next question is headlined "On a Role." What do you consider the primary responsibilities of a councilperson? And how do you balance that part-time public role with your personal life, including a full or part-time job you may have? Starting with Mr. Segaro.
Well, I don't think the council really has a part-time job. I've seen Joe work, I deal a lot with Joe on some of the properties I have, worked out with the mayor, I've seen some things he does, and they're never on part-time. Everywhere they go, they're always working, and every single time they're out there. Working both parts of it, it's going to be very, very tough. You have to really love what you're doing. I don't think any of us here are here because there's something beneficial for us. We're here because we love the city, we love the people, and we understand that it's going to be 24/7 days, it's a week job. So anything about part-time, I would dismiss it as, it's not going to be that. How do I expect it to be that? And I'm here to serve you guys 24/7, ask any questions you have. The job I have, I have people who handle major parts of what I do. It's called managing people, it's what I do. And I think I'll be more than happy to take all the time that the resident of Peekskill leave for me, and make Peekskill a better place.
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez.
Well, the first thing I want to say, after I decide to run for office, I think I got a more knowledge about the dedication, the sacrifice that we need to do with our poor families. I got a more respect about my opponents and the official elector, a lot of respect for Drew Classroom over there, 16-year in the office, Ford Elysium. Then the people say, yes, you are a good official elector. And then I had to say, I am a community serviceman. I service to the community, and I'm going to keep continuing to service the community. I don't know, my colleague mentioned Joe Torres' work, but I don't remember any single resolution that he proposed in four years. In four years, I don't remember any.
Thank you.
I don't want to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Torres.
Yes, as far as resolution goes, the last three or four years, usually we work together as council, put resolutions forward. So everything we do is usually together, and that's what we try to do. But being a business owner and being on the city council, it does sometimes get a little difficult because you try to balance these things in the beginning, but as time goes on, you get used to it. And what matters most is the community, and what you can do for the community. And I think some of the things you see today, where the city is thriving, is because of the things we've done on resolutions and stuff like that. So I'm proud to serve this community and I will too, people.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
So I definitely have a lot of respect for the work that the mayor and the common council members do. I know it's not an easy job, it's certainly, on paper, it may be a part-time job, but it doesn't appear to be actually a part-time job. I know a little bit about that, being on the school board, that requires a level of commitment and balance, and it's just not easy. I think that if your goal is to serve the city, is to, you know, is to try and, you know, be effective at your job, then you find a way to, you know, to make the time to balance it with work and the family. And, well, I don't know if social life is even possible at this point, but the occasional here and there. But it's just, you know, it's a balancing act, but it's one that you do willingly for the city.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan.
I've been involved in public service even before I'm trying to take on this role as a councilman. I served as an naval officer, working 20-hour days in weird places in the world. I was an assistant district attorney in Brooklyn, working 24-hour shifts in the middle of the night in Brooklyn. I want to be a councilman, and I think it's a, it is a 24-hour job. You're elected to make sure that the city runs properly. You work with your colleagues on the council, you work with the city manager. We set the policy as to what you want your city to be and how it needs to be run. In terms of managing the personal life, I had long discussions with my law partner, I had long discussions with my wife before I did this, and they're all on board. And again, as Louis said, if you have an organization, my law firm, I have a law partner, guess what? You take on a few more cases, that's the way it is. And he's all in favor of that. So those were all considerations before I did this. They're all good to go. I'm all good to go. I can manage it, and that's what I intend to do if elected to this position.
Thank you. Ms. Agudelo.
Yeah, well, being a committed devout community member is not a part-time job. That's a full-time job, and I think that that's a feeling that my running mates can resonate with, because we've all been so involved with this community since we've been here. I myself am currently the chair of the Environmental Climate Justice Committee for the NAACP, and I'm also sitting on the Conservation Advisory Council. I spend a lot of my free time at community events, whether it's through service or just community building, enjoying my time with the people I surround myself, my neighbors, getting to know them and getting to know what their needs and their obstacles are, and their past or their life. I find people, I find people here in Peekskill very interesting. I do that all alongside holding my full-time job in Manhattan. I commute down there on a daily basis. I think that being on city council, if anything, would be, would make my job a lot easier because I, we have a lot of big plans for the city. We really want to serve you all in the best way possible. And we know, we've all been involved with such different niches in our communities. We're engaged with different community groups, and I think that by, through the city council, we'd be able to empower them and kind of help streamline a lot of these solutions that they seek to get.
Thank you. All right, that's actually a half a dozen questions, but before we get to the closing statement, I'd like to end on a lighter note by asking these kinds of questions, and just whatever you want to say, it's fair game. I call it happy hours. So the question is, what is your favorite thing to do in Peekskill? Starting with Mr. Fernandez.
Well, I am passionate with the youth. I got two teenagers. My oldest son is 20, my older daughter, she's 18. But we got a big, big gift that we received three years ago. And I want to, to my daughter, raised in a city, that she can feel proud, that she can say, this is my city. I went in this April to the middle school in the career there, day. Can I ask the question to the student? When you go outside, when you go to another school, how you feel, how you say, how you say that you feel proud for being in Peekskill? And I didn't have any single answer for that thing. So I want to change the mind for the next generation. I want to change the mind for the older generation, when they say, if that happened in Peekskill for years and years, and doesn't have an answer. I want to work in that.
Thank you. Mr. Torres, your favorite thing to do in Peekskill?
Well, realistically, I don't have that much time. I own a business that works seven days a week, and then being on the council and stuff, but when I do go out, I like to enjoy the river. I like to meet the guys from OEM, and, you know, sometimes talk to them and see what's going on with the police department. And, you know, try to get a feel of the community, go out to the community when we have stuff going on in the streets, like the business street when we close down the street, talk to people and try to figure out, you know, what the issues are.
If any of you want to say being in forums, that's okay. Mr. Smith.
Well, you know, one of my favorite things to do recently is having pizza over at Melissa's. She makes great pizza. So, but aside from eating, it's some of the very lovely, fine food establishment that we have here. I'm a big fan of nature. I love the riverfront. I grew up, you know, at the park, the tree park, Blue Mountain, you know, hiking the trails. So I think, you know, one of the really nice things about the city of Peekskill is it has a really nice blend of like urban and suburban living. You know, it's just nestled right on the riverfront. You know, we have forests, we have, you know, now we have a beautiful waterfront, and you can walk the trail down there, the riverwalk down there. And it's just, it's easy to, for me at least, to just kind of get caught up in that. That's, you know, one of the things about Peekskill.
Thank you. Sullivan.
This is going to sound really simple. My favorite thing to do in Peekskill is get a cup of coffee at McDonald's with my wife and watch it, and go down to the riverfront and sit and talk. Because the week gets beyond us. We work, we run around, we do all kinds of things. But on a Sunday morning, and just sit and talk, and watching the river, it's a thing that you can only do in Peekskill. But we do it, and so that's my favorite.
Thank you. Actually, Ms. Agudelo.
Well, as I said before, I'm extremely involved with a lot of different community groups. So going to their events, going to whether it be a film showing, or a discussion, a book club. I know that there's yoga that goes on at Lana's. She used to have Kuna Lina yoga, she's an artist here. Or art shows. There's, I mean, there's a number of things to do. There's the live music downtown. I mean, Peekskill has it all, and that's why I'm so proud to be from this city. Something I didn't mention earlier, you said the goal of the city council, I believe that our responsibility is to provide vision for our city manager, who then implements what we want to see done here in Peekskill. The only way that we can do that is through collaboration, knowing what it is that you all want, what it is that you all need. And by being on the ground, in the community, with you all, having our ears to the floor, knowing what it is that you are all talking about, what it is that you're all concerned about, that's what's going to enable us to serve you the best way possible and represent you all the way that you should be. And the only way we can do that is by getting to know you all. So I spend my time with the people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Segaro.
Leave it now? Leave it or not, I'm actually running for council member. I've seen some of the most beautiful places in Peekskill that I've never seen before. I've gone knocking door to door and I enjoy it. You know, they told me that's going to be the hardest part, it's the part I enjoy the most. I get to actually meet the people of Peekskill, hear their stories, hear their concerns. I've been invited for lunch to come in, dinner, water, and sometimes drinks. But to hear the stories, the beautiful stories of people, some of the issues they have and trying to, you know, saying to myself, when I get to city council, I'm going to work on that issue. I look up into our seniors, the hardest working people in Peekskill. They got stories to tell that make you laugh and that make you love the city even more. And the best part of the night is coming home to my wife and telling her how much of a beautiful day I had and sharing it with her. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're at the closing statements. And Mr. Segarra, you can just segue right into the closing statement because your first step is that as well. You want to go? Again, 60 seconds for each statement.
I think I've practically said it all. As apparent to me, I hope there's a chance of you. But the Peekskill United team is the most knowledgeable, experienced, qualified team to keep this city going forward. I invest in the city through my children, my business, and I'm very happy to see where the city's going. I want to see the continued growth of it. I want to be a major part of it. And I think, you know, because you've heard the things we do, that we have the knowledge, the experience, the want, the vision to make Peekskill the jewel of Westchester and the envy of all of New York. I'm going to work hard night and day to serve you, the community, and our businesses to make that happen. Thank you.
Mr. Fernandez?
Somebody mentioned that he was hungry. I want to say thank you to Davey Ramon. I have a complaint because he's not ready to eat because I am hungry. It's a new noodle soup. It has the name Ramon in the front. About noodle, all my colleagues, maybe they can say that. It's a roast beef, so I don't know if he tried to say something, but I prefer chicken, but that's okay. First thing, I want to say thank you to everybody. The first thing I have to say, thank you God for giving me the opportunity to be here. And what I encourage to every single resident, the guy going to work for you. I want to try to be the voice for every single person in Peekskill. I want to be the voice for us, everybody, all, everybody. I don't want to represent one part of Peekskill. We are one Peekskill, both sides.
It's tough after these two. But let me just say, you know, I do love this city. I've been here most of my life and I love the people here. I got voted in by the people to represent the people. I believe that people in the city come first and we try to make decisions and make the city the best we can. And we're not always perfect, but we try our best. And I will always try my best to make the city the best we can. And I believe the Peekskill United team that we have together, all businessmen that have the smarts to do budgets and get things done, and I believe we can do that here. And I believe we will. But thank you, everybody, for coming here tonight.
Mr. Smith?
Okay, so again, thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening. I think, I don't think anybody up here does not want to move the city forward. I think you've heard different visions tonight as to what we feel is going to, is going to drive that. So you're going to be the decision-maker, not who you think is going to be destined to represent you in that endeavor. I believe that my team, the one Peekskill team, has the vision, the vibrancy, and the drive to move us forward. And if I'm lucky enough to be elected as a council member on November 7th, I look forward to working with all of you and whomever else is elected and helping to move the city forward. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you all for coming. I think one of the things you'll note from the six people who are running for common council, when you talk about diversity, this is as diverse a group as you could ever see in the city of Peekskill. It really is. Different backgrounds, ethnicity, race, whatever it is. But one of the things that we have to do, those things don't define us. What you have to do, this is a job interview. You have to look at the life experience of all six of us. The adversity, the education, what we've done in business, things we've done, whether we're military veterans like myself, business owners, as all four of us are on the Peekskill United side. This is a job interview. You've got the job on election day. You have to select who can run your budget, who's going to keep your taxes low, who's going to take care of your public safety. I submit to you that when you look at that, it's the Peekskill United team that I think can do that for you. And I ask you to vote for us on November 7th.
Thank you all so much for being here. First of all, I want to urge you all to go out and vote November 7th, no matter who it is you're voting for. Something I've learned from working in politics and just being civically engaged is that all politics is local. This is as local as it gets. And the only way to see direct change happen here in your environment, in your day-to-day life, is through your local government. So it's extremely important you do choose wisely. And I have to say that I'm very proud to be running with the people I'm running with. We all have successfully affected change, positive change here in Peekskill, and we've never even been elected to office. So just imagine what it is that we can do for the city of Peekskill together, through collaboration, through transparency, through the right leadership. These are the things that we need to bring to Peekskill so we can have, we can sustainably thrive and move in the direction that's good for all of Peekskill, so we can truly create a one Peekskill. So I hope that, I hope that my team has convinced you all to come out and vote for Colin Smith, Ramon Fernandez, and Vanessa Agudelo. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, both candidates. We're just going to reset up here and then we're going to have the mayoral candidates. Thank you.